We're not in order. Mr. Wisworth, please present.
Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is the City of Romulus City Council Regular Meeting for Tuesday, May twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty. This meeting is being held electronically in accordance to Governor Whitman's Executive Order twenty-twenty dash forty-eight, Section one A, which allows a meeting of a public body to be held electronically by telephone or video conferencing in a manner in which both the general public and the members of the public may participate by electronic means. Members of the public wishing to participate in this meeting may do so by phone or online from the Zoom meeting application. To join the meeting by phone, call six four six five five eight eight six five six. And when prompted, enter the meeting ID number eight two zero eight seven five four two eight zero zero, followed by the pound sign. Again, the meeting ID number is eight two zero eight seven five four two eight zero zero. If you're joining the meeting online from the Zoom meeting application, click the URL link and enter the meeting ID when prompted. During the public comment portion of the meeting, the raise hand method will be used to address the city council. And citizens may also submit a written request with comments by email to publiccomment@romulusgov.com before the end of the pub- public comment portion of the agenda. And at this time, we will have roll call. Councilwoman Abdo?
Yes.
Councilman Barton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Roscoe?
Yes.
Councilwoman Tally?
Yes.
Councilman Wisworth?
Yes.
Councilwoman Webb? Councilwoman Webb?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Williams? Mister Chair, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Great. At this time, we will read the agenda. But before I read the agenda, I'm gonna ask while I'm reading the agenda that those of you that have called in, you do not have your phones on mute, we ask that you please do so at this time, it's very difficult to hear. Thank you. The regular council meeting agenda is as follows. Number one, agenda, number two, minutes, number three, petitioner, number four, chairperson's report, five, mayor's report, six, clerk's report, seven, treasurer's report, eight, public comment, nine, unfinished business, ten, new business, eleven is warrant twenty dash ten, number twelve is communication, and number thirteen is adjournment and a motion in order to accept the regular council meeting agenda as presented. Councilwoman Abdo?
So moved to the agenda, excuse me.
I need a second. Councilwoman Williams? Councilwoman Williams?
Support.
It's been, it's been, uh, motion by, Miss Abdo, supported by Miss Williams, for approval of the agenda as presented. Miss Abdo?
Yes.
Miss Williams?
Yes.
Mister Wisworth?
Yes.
Miss Webb?
Yes.
Miss Tally?
Yes.
Miss Roscoe? Your votes yet approved.
Next on the agenda is number two for approval of the minutes from the regular council meeting held on May eleventh, twenty-twenty.
Uh, Mister Chairman, I will move for the minutes of, 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 May the eleventh of twenty-twenty.
Councilwoman Abdo?
It's been motion by Mister Wisworth, supported by Miss Abdo, for approval of the minutes from the regular council meeting, which was held on five-eleventh, twenty-twenty. Mister Wisworth?
Yes.
Miss Abdo?
Yes.
Miss Tally?
Yes.
Miss Williams?
Yes.
Webb?
Yes.
Miss Roscoe? Your votes yet?
There are no petitions on the agenda. Number four is the chairperson's report.
Thank you, uh, Madam Clerk. I just wanted to say, I want to, uh, hope you stay safe and take care of yourself. We will get over this thing together, all in it together. And let's just keep moving, keep running, moving forward. That's all I have for chairperson's report.
Motion being ordered to accept the chairperson's report. Councilwoman Webb?
Yes.
Who's that, uh, I'm sorry, I've been hearing the, uh, press.
I'd like to lead the motion to accept the chairperson's report.
Councilwoman Tally?
I support that motion.
Was that motion, oh, uh, supported by Miss Roscoe?
No, sir, it was reported by, it was supported by Councilwoman Tally. Webb and Tally.
Motion by Miss Roscoe, supported by Miss Tally. Chairperson's report. Roscoe?
I agree with, uh, just what does that motion, Mister Chair?
I can't hear you.
I said, Miss, Councilwoman Webb made the motion.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry because I'm having trouble hearing the motion. Miss Webb, you made the motion?
Miss Webb made the motion, and it was supported by Councilwoman Tally.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm having very difficulty hearing the names. Uh, motion by Miss Webb, supported by Miss Tally, for approval of the chairperson's report. Miss Webb?
Yes.
Miss Tally?
Yes.
Mister Wisworth?
Yes.
Miss Williams?
Yes.
Miss Roscoe?
Yes.
Miss Abdo?
Yes.
Your votes yes, motion approved, thank you.
Thank you, Mister Chair. Number five is the mayor's report.
Good evening, City Council, Treasurer, Clerk, and listening audience. Uh, a couple of action items, but before I do get into that, um, brought a quick, uh, message. This was one I used in the service, uh, yesterday at the cemetery. It's Matthew five-nine, and it's as simple as blessed are the peacemakers, uh, for they shall be called sons of God. And that's very true, I want to thank, uh, all those who came out. Uh, thank you, really, to the men and women, uh, of all the branches of our military that have given the ultimate sacrifice, uh, so we can have this awesome system, uh, that we have, this democracy that we have. And also, a special thank you to VFW Post ninety-five sixty-eight, uh, who are always diligent about showing respect for all those who served. Um, the couple items that I do have before you, the City Council, uh, the first request is a, uh, recommendation from, uh, Vern Morris, our Assistant Finance Director, and our legal counsel, Steve Hitchcock. Uh, this is to concur with the administration. Can you hear me now?
I can hear you.
Yes.
Okay, I'll, I'll start over with the recommendation, it came on with the recording saying I was muted, then I was unmuted. Uh, so the recommendation is to concur with administration, authorize the mayor and clerk to enter into the attached, uh, renewable agreement, uh, for cellular tower that is located at sixty-nine hundred Wayne Road. Uh, and that extension will take us through May thirty-first of twenty thirty-four.
Councilwoman Roscoe?
Yes, I'd like to make the motion for the renewal of the cell tower, lease agreement for address at fifty-nine hundred Wayne Road.
Support. It's been motioned by, Miss Roscoe, supported by Mister Wisworth, for assistance of the cell tower agreement. Any discussion?
Uh, I have a question for Mayor Burka. First, uh, Mayor, what is the reason that this is gonna go that far, like fifty years out it looks like to me? Do I see twenty seventy-four?
No, that's, that's a typo in the memo, the contract, if you look at it under, uh, the electronic packet, page nineteen, the second, uh, text item under the contract says lease term extended, and that's till twenty thirty-four.
Okay, fine, fine.
Two, two zero three four, not.
Okay, okay, very good.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mister Chair, under discussion, we have another hand raised, and that's from Councilwoman Webb.
Thank you, Miss Clerk. Um, I did a lot of reading, there was a lot of reading. Uh, I only have one question. Did our, uh, let me see, who did this letter come from? Oh, Stephen, no, from Vern, our finance director, in regards to who is the American Tower? I, I, I didn't understand that, I did do the entire, um, I did read the entire contract. But I was wondering myself, did they find out, did that department find out who the American Tower is, who that is? Or what companies, what information?
Yeah, my understanding is that it was, uh, identified between, uh, Attorney, uh, Officer, Park, and Vern Morris. The final contract that we sent before we spell that out, the, the memo didn't have it in it, uh, Councilwoman Webb?
Right. Okay, yeah, 'cause I noticed he, uh, changed, um, on exchange within paragraph fourteen from Vern's memo. And I kept reading and reading, so I said, well, I'll just wait and ask at the council meeting tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
No problem, and it was, it was clarified that it was the American Power LLC in that.
Yes, yes, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Roll call votes. Miss Roscoe?
Yes.
Mister Wisworth?
Yes.
Miss Tally?
Yes.
Miss Williams?
I had discussion.
Okay, she came, Miss Williams?
There's a lot of static coming on, so. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So, to, I had spoke with, uh, the city attorney and also, uh, Vern today, and I was also under the impression that it was going, you know, because of the document that was included in the council packet, that it was going to twenty seventy-four, but he was extending it out. So, what was the original contract? Because it started, I was under the impression that it started in two thousand and eleven up until two thousand and thirty-four.
It, it didn't start back, and I don't have the original contract, but it did start back in that timeframe, twenty thirty-four. What this is doing is locking that contract in, and I think you're also getting a, we're getting a signing bonus from the city by ensuring that we stay in this contract. And that has to be acted on upon before May thirty-first of this year.
Okay, so, in the discussion that I had with, uh, the Assistant Finance Director, in two thousand and eleven, the city got a one-time, um, you know, uh, payment of fifteen thousand. Am I correct? And so, at this time, they'll be receiving a fifty thousand dollar one-time payment.
Correct.
So, it's not additional forty years onto, uh, two thousand and thirty-four? It's, you know, because it's, it's not clear in the, the, the document that was included in the council packet.
Well, if, if you look at the, uh, and I'm looking at page nineteen of your electronic packet, the printed copy in the packet would be the first page of the actual, um, agreement. And under item number two is where it does reference, where it says lease term extended. Uh, it does state that it's, uh, the otherwise scheduled to expire on May thirty-first of twenty thirty-four. So, that's where it listed it, uh, but there was a typo in the memo, uh, that did come through.
Okay, because, you know, even though, you know, I, I seen that in there, but then we had another additional, uh, document that said something different. Now, I did do some research on American Towers, and they're, they're a global company. And isn't it, um, and you correct me if I'm wrong, they sublease these towers out to other cellphone companies?
Correct, they, they have, uh, self-locating of other towers, typically non-competing towers, uh, for this type of product.
Okay, and, uh, the information that I also received from Vern, he was very, um, he took his time and answered all my questions. Uh, in two thousand and nineteen, we received taxes from American Ti- uh, Towers, which paid, or whatever the cellphone company was that leased that property, that tower, two thousand and, two thousand four hundred and fifty-four dollars for the summer taxes. For the winter taxes, it was four hundred and seventy-one dollars. The monthly lease was one thousand nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars. Now, each, each year after this is approved, it will increase four percent?
Yes, there's an increase written into the contract, correct.
Now, Mayor, I just wanna make sure, because I looked, and I've been doing research on the, the five G towers, and I understand this is not that type of tower, but is there any, anywhere in this document, or is it any safeguard to make sure? I understand from Vern and the city attorney that they would have to, if they wanted to switch over to that type of tower, that they would have to come back to planning. But is it anything, anywhere in here where it specified or safeguard us? Because from what I'm hearing and the research that I've done on the five G towers right now, they give off a lot of radiation that can cause cancer and those type of, uh, diseases. So, what type of safeguards do we have to extend it out, um, you know, that long?
Sure, the, the, as you got the same response that I did, this is not a five G tower. The five G would be, uh, governed by the Federal, uh, Communication Commission, so that would be a safeguard there, because this wouldn't be allowed on this current tower. This, the, what I understand, and I'm not the, the person on technology with five G, but there are areas throughout the country that they are looking to put, uh, repeaters at lower levels. So, what I understand is buildings, other poles, uh, not necessarily on cell tower communications. Uh, the, the, kind of the spirit of why this company would wanna extend this, and why they would wanna pay an incentive, is more to lock in that they have that lease. Some people that own towers that are co-locating, just like this one that we are, is that they are opting to sell the tower rather than lease. And, you know, that, that, that's why they wanna make sure that they have a locked-in lease with us, but it is not for five G. Uh, and there, there's nothing that would allow for a five G with this contract that I'm proposing.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Miss Williams? You voting, uh, Miss Williams?
Yes.
Uh, Miss Webb? Yes.
Uh, through the chair, so maybe who made the motion?
Miss Roscoe made the motion. Mister Wisworth?
Okay.
Mister Wisworth, second.
Thank you.
Roll call vote. Ms. Williams? Williams?
No.
Miss Webb?
Yes.
Miss Abdo?
Yes.
Your votes yes, motion approved.
Thank you, Council. Uh, the next action item is bucket B, and, uh, the recommendation comes from, uh, Josh Monty, our, our police captain and legal counsel. And this is, uh, to concur with administration and authorize the mayor and clerk to accept the attached Bureau of Justice Assistant Coronavirus Emergency Supplement Funding Program grant award. And that would be to the City of Romulus in the amount of forty-seven thousand five hundred and fifty dollars.
Uh, Mister Chairman, it's outlu for the, uh, to approve the Bureau of Justice Agreement Award.
Councilwoman Webb? Councilwoman Webb?
I support that.
It's been motioned by Mister Wisworth, supported by Miss Webb, for the Justice Agreement Award. Any discussion?
Uh, Mister Chair, I did see Councilwoman Roscoe's hand up, I'm not sure if she was trying to support the motion or if she had discussion.
I did not have discussion, I was supporting the motion.
Okay, the question, my answer was, was made by Mister Wisworth, I, Miss Webb. So, we're gonna run the roll call vote. Mister Wisworth?
Yes.
Miss Webb?
Yes.
Miss Williams?
Yes.
Miss Tally?
Yes.
Miss Roscoe?
Yes.
Miss Abdo?
Yes.
Your votes yes, motion approved.
Thank you, City Council. Uh, the last action item that I gave, I see, is basically to recognize the revenue for the grant that was just awarded. Uh, so, I am, uh, asking that we concur with administration and introduce Budget Amendment nineteen slash twenty dash eighteen. And that would be to recognize anticipated revenues we receive from the Bureau of Justice Assistance for Coronavirus Emergency Supplement Funding Program for the City of Romulus for the Romulus Police Department, uh, COVID Response Plan, uh, for combat the spread of COVID nineteen. Uh, any excess funding received from this expenditure incurred as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty will be utilized for the remainder of the grant period.
Councilwoman Webb?
I'd like to make the motion to concur with administration and introduce Budget Amendment nineteen twenty dash eighteen.
You have a sec?
Councilwoman Roscoe?
I support that motion.
It's been motioned by, with, supported by Miss Roscoe, to the Committee nineteen slash twenty dash eighteen Personal Safety Fund. Discussing. Hearing no discussion? Webb?
Yes.
Miss Roscoe?
Yes.
Miss Williams?
Yes.
Miss Tally?
Yes.
Mister Wisworth?
Yes.
Miss Abdo?
Yes.
Your votes yes, that motion is approved.
Thank you, City Council, that concludes my report.
Thank you.
Number six is the council report. I would just like to announce, or give some update information with regards to the upcoming, um, August fourth, um, presidential primary election that's coming up. Um, as many of you are aware, last week, Secretary of State Benson announced that, um, absentee ballot applications will be mailed to every registered voter in the state of Michigan. Um, so you should be receiving that, I did check with the state, and I believe they started mailing last week. Um, if for some reason you have not received that application and you desire to vote an absentee ballot, please give us a call, um, or you can email us at elections@romulusgov.com. Give us a call, we are answering, um, our, our, uh, our messages, and the number is seven three four nine four two seven five four zero. Also, if, if you wanna know the status, whether or not you're on our permanent absentee voter list, you can also, um, give us a call. The, those registered voters here in Romulus that are on our permanent absentee voter list, uh, the applications were mailed out last week. And, um, so again, if you have any questions with regards to the absentee voting in the upcoming election, please do not give us, uh, please do not hesitate to contact us. Also, I do wanna let everyone know that the polls will be open as of today. Um, although the AV applications have been mailed out to all registered voters in Michigan, uh, the polls will be open on that date. So, stay tuned, we will, um, keep you updated, um, as things progress. And with that, that concludes the clerk's report.
Um, clerk, uh, clerk, uh, I, for, well, I did receive, uh, my application today.
Pardon?
I did receive the absentee ballot application today.
Thank you, Mister Barton. And also, I wanna add, I, um, I also wanna add that there is a drop box, um, the, the election drop box is open. So, if you don't feel comfortable putting it in the mail, and, and the applications that you receive from, uh, from our, from here, the city, they do have prepaid postage on them, but if you, you know, prefer to drop it off in the drop box, it is open, and it's located right in front of, um, City Hall, it's a stainless steel box. So, um, again, give us a call if you have any questions.
Uh, Mister, uh, Mister Chairman? Mister Chairman?
Okay. Mister, um, I believe Mister Wisworth?
Mister Wisworth, go ahead, Mister Wisworth.
Uh, yes, this is for the clerk, uh, tell him what's on the ballot, August fourth.
Um, you know, Mister Wisworth, we have not seen the ballot yet. So, I, I don't wanna answer you in there, because that gets constantly changing. And, um, once we actually have, uh, received a sample ballot, then, um, everyone will receive that ballot as soon as I know.
But my question is, what is the public voting for?
Well, there's, like I said, I have not seen, um, the ballot, I, I know that, uh, well, I'd have to pull it up, Mister Wisworth.
All right, that's fine.
Okay, but I, I will notify, I'll give you a, a report next week, once I have, um, that sample ballot with that information.
Okay, thank you.
Um, uh-huh. And I see another hand, Mister Barton, uh, from Councilwoman Webb.
Miss Webb?
Uh, yes, this is either for a city clerk or a city treasurer. I, um, I took a senior citizen up last week to make her a water payment. And I noticed there's, there are three boxes out there. What are those yellow envelopes in the mailbox for? I guess I've never really used any drop boxes before, so I'm sort of curious, and I didn't wanna go rummaging through it to see. What are those envelopes for? It's in the white mailbox, oh.
Oh, I, I can answer that.
Okay.
Those, uh, so right next to the black drop box, there is a white, um, mailbox, and those are empty envelopes. So, that way, if a customer comes to drop a payment, and they forgot an envelope, and let's say they have, um, a check in their invoice, they can place it inside one of those empty envelopes and deposit it into the black drop box, so that's what those are for.
Oh, that is wonderful, thank you.
You're very welcome.
Very convenient.
Are there any more questions? Are there any more questions under the clerk's report? If not, that will conclude the clerk's report. Number, uh, Treasurer's report.
Good evening, Council, Mayor, Clerk, and listening audience. Um, I do not have anything to report tonight, thank you.
All right, number eight is Public Comment, and this is the portion of the meeting for those members of the public who have joined us this evening and you wish to address City Council. To do so, the raise hand method will be used to identify those wishing to speak. Press star nine from your phone, or the raise hand icon from your meeting application, if you've joined online. After you've been acknowledged, you will have three minutes to speak. Additional time will be upon the approval of the chairperson. If there are any members of the public wishing to speak, also, you're welcome to submit an email at publiccomment@romulusgov.com. Mr. Chair, I do not see anyone raise hands at this time, nor have we received any email, um, from anyone from the public requesting to speak.
Okay, um, Madam Clerk, if, if there's other comments, are we gonna close?
Okay, number nine is unfinished business. Number 10 is new business. Number 11 for approval is warrant 20 dash 10.
The decision that we pay warrant 20 dash 10 in the following amount, one million, eighty-six thousand, six hundred and sixty-eight dollars and thirty-eight cents.
Can I get a support?
It's been motioned by, to pay warrant number 20 dash 10 for one million, eighty-six thousand, six hundred and sixty-eight dollars and thirty-eight cents. Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Wisworth?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Chair votes, yes, warrant number 20 dash 10 will be paid.
Number 12 is communication. Uh, I see a hand, Councilwoman Tally.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Um, just, um, I'm hoping we can get this fixed. I don't know what's going on with the call this week, it was kind of very unbearable. I don't know what all that static is, but we, this has been one of the worst ones we've had with all that static, so I'm not sure what that's all about. Anyway, uh, maybe we can get that fixed before the next council meeting. Um, I just want to put out there, and I'm gonna sound like a broken record, the census is well underway. We want to just keep the momentum going. I want to thank the city of Romulus for their participation. Um, we're at sixty-eight point six percent, the national response is at sixty point one percent, Michigan's response is at sixty-six point seven, and Wayne County is at sixty-one point seven, and again, we're at, Romulus is at sixty-eight point six. Um, I was hoping with that week we had all last week, we would break the seventy percent mark, but it's okay, we're at sixty, sixty-eight point six. Let's keep the momentum going, it's only nine questions, um, and that's ten years' worth of benefits by nine questions. Um, and it's not just for us, we need, not just for the city of Romulus to get to participate, but people in other surrounding cities, counties. We need the whole state of Michigan to be at a hundred percent, so, because it's a benefit to our whole state. So, please spread the word, keep, um, encouraging people to take the census. We're talking about ten years of benefits for only, uh, nine questions to be answered, so please, 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 um, let's stay on top of the census. Um, I'm gonna sound like a broken record until we, it comes to a close. So, thank you for your participation, for those who haven't, let's just continue to spread that word, thank you.
Another hand raised, Mr. Chair, from Councilwoman Williams.
Hi, yes, I would just like to, uh, remind, uh, residents of Romulus, uh, Forgotten Harvest will resume on, uh, June the 2nd, and we will be starting at 12 noon, and the only requirement is that you give your name and your zip code, and, um, the food will be distributed until four o'clock. And the very next day will be, uh, on Wednesday, the 3rd, will be at the Corey Elementary, uh, where Corey School, that's located on Wayne Road, and, um, they, they start at 10. Thank you.
Another hand is raised, Mr. Chair, from Councilwoman Webb.
Ms. Webb?
Uh, yes, I was about to say very briefly, let us continue to stay safe, wear our masks when we're out and about, and please don't forget to pray, continue to pray for our first responders and their families, because they are truly, truly putting their lives on the line. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, we have another hand raised, uh, Councilwoman Williams.
I'm sorry, I, it's, I'm sorry to, uh, even, uh, let it slip my mind to say, to all those residents out there that is in need of masks, that don't have the finances to purchase a mask, you can contact me at seven three four six seven three eight three nine six. I have masks and gloves for anyone in the city of Romulus that is in need. Thank you.
That's your Councilwoman Williams.
Ms., uh, uh, Ms. Clerk?
Yes, sir.
I'd just like to say, uh, on the census, uh, I know, I'm in tally, uh, I mentioned the questions, nine to ten questions, but really, it's very simple. I don't really take that much, it's just how many people in your house, how many questions you have, but it's so simple. It's nothing, there's privacy, there, you know, some people may be afraid that, hey, I won't give it to certain people, but it's really basic information. So, that should be put out there too, because, I asked me, say, well, go ahead, go ahead, no, it's simple. We're just trying to, uh, count people so we can get our state and our city, thank you.
Is there any more communication from Council? If not, Mr. Chair, number 13 is adjournment.
Show move.
Councilwoman Webb?
Ms. Williams, what's that?
Support.
It's been motioned by Mr. Wisworth, supported by Ms. Webb, for it. Mr. Wisworth?
Yes, yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Chair votes, yes, we are adjourned, thank you.